Right, at the very front it talks about hearings. It seems to get you to go find in that vicinity.
Um, and on page ninety-eight of the blue book, just kinda says, "Any request for waivers from" the submission requirements is just the required information.
Well, that would be an easy place to just kinda...
That's the same thing that's in the survey.
Put a little note that refers to the form or...
Yeah, but that's only for site plan, right?
Yeah, yeah. That'd be one way to go. We could put it into multiple sections, or we could try and put it in the front. Maybe we could add a definition for waiver that kind of covers all site plan review and...
It's similar to that idea.
Looking in the definitions, we don't have one for waiver in here if we... Just specifying, you know, act, what's specific about act, getting a waiver in act and as opposed to anywhere else somehow. Or maybe it's the same, but just love to get it in here somewhere.
Yeah, there's only two spots where it talks about waivers in the ordinance and one is under site plan review. There's two, the one I just said earlier, then another one says, "In addition, the board may schedule a site inspection in accordance with subsection six point six point four point five point four point E, if deemed necessary and resolve any requests for waivers and variations and variation form from the submission requirements." Excuse me. Couldn't read for a second. Nothing really says how to do it.
If somebody is asking for a waiver, it's usually something that's non-conforming, correct?
Well, yeah, I guess. So with the last one we had, herd storage was asking for waiver for fire lane, no parking line, whatever it was, WD-4, WB forty tractor trailer trucks and a partial waiver on vegetation. So it's not that they're non-conforming, but well, I guess you're not conforming to the the requirements, you know, so you don't, not all the requirements pertain to your application. So you're asking the board to just forget about looking into that stuff because...
Well, I was thinking that the waiver information could be put right in the very front in along with non-conformance. That's why I was asking.
Well, sometimes the waivers are things like they wanna not have to do a hydrogeologic study or a groundwater monitoring, this or that, or a, you know, like they don't wanna do some of the stormwater management. They wanna get a waiver from that, so that's not necessarily a non-conforming, but it's similar, I mean it's...
You could even just add something to the application itself, you know, for the waiver request so that it just spells out how they, the board wants them to do it, you know. You know, where it says required documents, you just put another checkbox for waiver submissions, you know what I mean? That kinda gets you away from it. You don't even have to put it in the ordinance because you're saying if you're, if you need a waiver, you need to submit it with this packet.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't know.
So it would just go the form that you handle?
At the end of the day, it'd just be like, you know, almost something like that, but you would have all these things, required submission, septic, you know, whatever, hydro, whatever, you know, all these other things that it wants, and then you'll have waiver requests. So if there's any, then they'll have to either check off the box or say NA, you know?
Check it off and fill out the form.
Check it off and fill out the form.
Mm-hmm.
And that gets it away from even having to really put it in the ordinance or make an article for it unless work for you guys.
I think it's still a town, we still do town meeting to do it like that.
No, I'm just gonna add it to the application.
Yeah, right.
Because what you're asking them to do is nothing different than what they're already supposed to be doing. You're just trying to spell it out for them a little bit easier, I think what you're trying to do, right?
Formalize it, yeah. Formalize the process with what they have to address, which, you know, just kinda does.
And what I can do is take those two that we were just looking at, kinda meld, mold whatever together and present it to you guys and then we can redo our applications and you guys can verify if that's how, if good enough for you or not and I don't think this has to be, this isn't, something that needs to be voted on.
Yeah, I think that sounds good for now and if the other members wanna do more with it, we'll look at it.
Yeah, I like, I like the form idea.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we gotta get some, something in writing, even if it's not in the ordinance.
Sort of formalizes the process, which we've kind of been hit and miss with waivers.
Yeah.
Chris, you scribbled out on yours a couple things. Can I see which ones you scribbled out? Thank you.
We don't have to deal with this at town meeting.
No, I don't think so.
We'll see what the others put. And that's a plus in my book.
Yeah, anything, we don't have to deal with a town meeting is a plus, right?
No, you didn't, right? You just scribbled out section eights.
Yeah, small stuff that...
Why are you actually doing something important?
I am.
Alright, so what you guys had talked about last time were your zoning ordinances. Waivers, which we just kinda touched on, the pet burial, timber harvesting, and the grading and filling with the land use chart one. That one has this multiple different grading and fillings in that. I would like to clean that up a little bit.
Yeah, you wanna look at that now?
I think P was one of the things she had brought forward last time too.
Right, oh, well, look at it. Uh, start on page sixteen where we have different... Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so C and D, and even E and F, well, contradic-
Contradict?
Contradict, I'm having trouble speaking.
No, we can just kinda walk through it. So C, filling grading other earth moving activity less than ninety-nine cubic yards per year is pretty much permitted, or it's CEO review when you're in the...
Right, and that one I have, I don't have any issues with that one. I think it's more or less...
Normal, I mean, ninety-nine cubic yards, still a fair amount, ninety-nine yards in the shoreline, but that's why you have CEO review on it, so... Filling, grading and other earth moving activity a hundred to four hundred and ninety-nine cubic yards per year. So that one's pretty much the same as the other one, except it's conditional use instead of CEO review. As a hundred to five hundred cubic yards in the shoreline is a fair amount. Five hundred to nine hundred, uh, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Well, I guess it's not confusing.
Permitted up to ten thousand cubic yards?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Right, well, that's, that's something we've been struggling with for, for years. Now, small pit owners wanna be able to operate without having to go through the hoops of the big, big pit operators and...
That's five hundred to fifty triaxle loads.
Oh, it's a lot of material, ten thousand.
Five hundred and fifty triaxle loads.
That's a lot.
Based on eighteen yards for a normal triaxle, so...
Yeah. Well, I mean, the easiest, the easiest thing would be just to reduce the nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine somewhat and leave the rest alone, right?
Well, then F would become a range, right? So you'd be five hundred to something less than ninety-nine, and then it would be...
Right, we could reduce F down according to what we decide to do with E.
Exactly.
Problem with these ones too is I don't have the ability to, I don't know what they're pulling out there anyway, that's...
No, right.
I can't, I can't tell you how much material...
Maybe you look at that place on Hopper Road.
Right, and that's two building lots.
Yeah, but they also went up, what are they doing up on the hill and everything?
That's where the houses went.
Yeah, exactly, but I mean, so there's a lot of material being moved there that that if, if these, if this number was lower, then they would have to at least be CEO review.
CEO review or even conditional use, sometimes having this, just getting permission to do something that big is not the worst thing either.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I'd be, yeah, yeah. So we, I mean, instead of changing the numbers for the five hundred to nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, we could, you know, we could say it's, instead of being permitted, it's now it's CEO review. I mean, but that would just start eating up your time, wouldn't it, or... Cause it seems like it's a couple ways to tackle it.
Really, I mean, they, if they're moving that much material, though, they still have to have a, what I've been told is they have to have a building permit to do the five hundred to nine thousand, ten thousand.
Yeah, yeah. They should have already obtained their building permit.
Cause you're usually, doing something that big, you're usually either
leveling it.
Leveling the ground or bringing material in.
Preparing, right, yeah, that is, yeah, cause we do see a lot of preparation prior to permitting. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we could, I'm on page seventeen, E, we could just change the, the Ps to Rs on that one. And we could reduce the number too if we wanted to. There's a couple ways to tackle it, it seems like.
You have to reduce the number in E and then reduce the, in F too then?
Yeah. Determining what we wanna reduce it to was kind of the, we have to make it palatable at town meetings somehow.
Yeah. But aren't we? On page fifty-three, we talk about you need a conditional use unless you do less than a thousand cubic yards. And on, well, C and D is less than a thousand, but E is more than a thousand and it's saying that it's permitted.
So then why don't you just change it to conditional use?
On E?
Yeah, cause that doesn't comport with what we say on page fifty-three.
No, I know, years ago we tried to fix it and we got, we got some of it, we didn't, we didn't get everything.
Well, then if we just change five hundred to whatever the number is on E, like you're saying, to Cs. Make all the Ps Cs.
You could.
It's, I mean, there's different ways to look at it. You got the...
Would we, in that, in that sort of respect, would we be asking the people who work on the road, the people who work on the roads ditching and everything to be getting conditional use permits?
That's different, that's town maintenance.
That's like a whole different ball.
That's, that's different, I would say. That's more maintenance and...
Yeah, that's within the town. It's, it's within the right of way of the road.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Easements and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of all, some of the different examples of, of small projects, five hundred, they're moving these five hundred yards per year and that, you know, it's a small project, but they still have to come into the planning board and they wouldn't like it cause they're so small, but I was trying to think of what, what examples of those projects.
But you also can, you know...
Over by the playgrounds.
Making a parking lot, well, that was huge, that was big though.
Well, yeah, well...
That was massive, but this is how they got away with it, cause they were taking out the less than ten thousand.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, but that's like you said, it's like a truck every other day or something.
Well, yeah, I mean, uh...
Throughout the, you know, oh, yeah.
So basically, that would be, you know, five hundred fifty-five trucks. So that would be two trucks a day, based on five days a week, fifty-two, fifty-two weeks a year.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we, I do remember noodling with this before and we, we did make progress, like you were saying, John, on page fifty-three.
Yeah.
But we didn't...
Do the chart.
Yeah, we didn't get the chart cleaned up. And I remember we came across it later, but we weren't, didn't wanna revisit it because we'd just done the town meeting with that and just kinda left it in there.
Well, we could make, I just throw it out there, we could make D a hundred to nine ninety-nine. And then E, a thousand and above it.
The only thing that hurts us with that one is you have, with D, you have conditional use for resource protection, shoreline and littoralopy, and then not allowed in E.
Right, we don't wanna increase the four ninety-nine in D because we would be...
Yeah, yeah.
You see what I'm saying there?
Yep.
What Jason's saying. But it would be nice if we... We're happy with, everyone's pretty happy with the five hundred, being, them people being able to move the five hundred around in the shoreline zone with conditional use, that seems a reasonable amount. It's not too big or too small.
That's kinda like that project they did on Washer Drive. Where they moved that hill.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that is a fair amount per year to move, move in the shoreline zone, but I don't know, maybe we have to look at what DEP says about that too, I don't know. I'd be tempted to leave the five hundred number alone and just maybe try to reduce it to ten thousand.
Well, to comply...
Pretty much, yeah.
To comply with fifty-three, we could say five hundred to nine hundred and ninety-nine and leave it Ps. And then everything over a thousand in F.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, yeah.
Cause then I think we're agreeing with what we say in the back.
Can you repeat that to me, John?
So he would just turn the ten thousand on F to one thousand.
Yeah, and E, five hundred to nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Yep. But I mean, all you're doing is, is matching the ordinance, the body of the ordinance with the land use chart now, so you're kinda just doing housekeeping.
Right.
Yeah.
So is that really an ordinance change?
I probably would just throw it in there, I don't know. They might say it's housekeeping, but...
Town meeting for that, a hundred percent, a hundred percent town meeting on that. Oh, my God, yeah. Yeah, if we do it, if we try to sneak it through, they're gonna...
Yeah, it's, it's housekeeping, but it's probably good to let them see it up front.
Yeah, it's a numerical change in the ordinance. You know, we can have a hearing on it, get discussion.
Yeah.
People wanna talk about it, you know, maybe we...
I mean, it's still a boatload, nine hundred and ninety-nine cubic yards are permitted. That's a boatload.
That's, that's almost thirty triaxles.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a lot of material.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, you think about someone's private compost business or something, they might, they'd be in the hundreds of yards so that, you know, that would, you know, allow them to move readily. Alright, so that makes sense. I think that's good numbers.
And, and I think we're, we have good justification that we're cleaning up because the approved changes, what, two years ago or a year ago?
It was last year.
Oh, no, it was, yeah, that was five, five or more years ago, yeah.
Well, didn't we do that mineral part recently?
Last year.
Last year.
We did, but not that part, yeah, we didn't change that part of it though. It was under, it was, I remember going through with Ken and Brenda and...
Alright, so we're gonna go, E is five hundred to nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Yep.
And then F will be one thousand?
Yep, definitely get some comment, but...
Yeah. We'll put those together. So then we're working with... So the grading and filling, it'll be nice to have that one cleaned up a little bit. And then we have the waivers, pet burial and timber harvesting.
Start with the pet burial. Oh, man, yeah. You know, there's a place, I, I looked through the ordinance to see if there was a place...
Five point two one, water quality protection. That's the only place that I really find, if you guys wanted to put it in there, that I feel that it should be put in. But...
What's the consequence?
Yeah, then is this an enforce, are we enforcing, what is this, enforceable?
Who's gonna enforce it?
Jim Driscoll, right?
I don't know. I'm just kidding. I don't know.
And then what's the consequence?
Five, uh, five point, uh, two one.
They have to pay you.
All the way up to the dog. It's in there, it's, it's, it's just all the way towards... Yeah, but that's still an, under the five point two one.
Incentive.
There are other examples.
That's the new version. Yeah, it's all the way vegetation.
Yeah, well, I think, isn't that a normal fine, uh, feet or finer scale that we got for, that goes across multiple sectors of violation?
Seen it twice.
So we just go along with the same? Use the same numbers for any sort of violation.
Right.
Well, it's, it's tough because a resident came in with this and you don't wanna under, you know, look at it. Uh, but the other, this is, how many times in a decade do you deal with this?
Uh, it's, it's hard to know. It seems like it's be, gonna become more of an issue as lots get to be smaller, people are cramming in, I mean, it's, it is... I do, I mean, honestly, I, I do have concerns about the number of dogs on the lakes. Everyone needs their brand new septic, but they're, there's, they can bring five dogs with them and everyone has five dogs all pooping next to the lake and it's really...
Yeah, and then pick it up.
Yeah, I mean, I... Not that, not that that's exactly what we're dealing with here, but it's just, you know, there, there's something to it, you know, cause it, it does add up. I mean, if you have, you know, how many, how many potential animal burial use per year, it's gonna, you know... It's just, it's hard to, like you said, how do we really figure out if they buried their dog there or not, like what?
Who's the local health officer?
I don't, I'm not sure what her name is.
Uh, Vicki.
I believe so.
It's Vicki, right?
Yeah, I think that sounds right. I met her once.
For our town, just for our town?
Mm-hmm, Jen knows, she has the contact. Uh, but that, they contacted about that with the local health officer.
She wouldn't go out?
Neither would, nor would the state. But the state, this is all that stuff that, uh...
We saw before.
He sent, he did, but it just contradicts itself throughout the whole thing, cause some agencies will give you a guideline and then some exempt our domestic animals.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of this is written for
Right, farm.
Uh, farm, yeah, farm animals, and if you were having livestock, you had a, you know, um...
Well, I was trying to look at the laws. I mean, he's got a lot of articles here. Really, the law is what we should be looking at and then I asked about the health thing, cause that was the only thing I saw in the law.
Yeah, but I don't, there's not an actual law that actually states that you can't do that. There's guidelines though. What they want you to do.
It's entitled twenty...
Oh, it is.
And the other worry is if you do that a bit, that stuff gets stronger all the time.
Right, right.
Really the problem.
Right, there's a couple different, um, areas where contamination should, could be, yeah.
I don't know if that turns into a fair ever kind of rule or...
Yeah, I'm sure it takes a little while to go away.
Well, yeah, if you said that's a ten years, it's like really strong in that within this soil or whatever's left of that.
Yeah.
Dog or cat.
Well, maybe, maybe instead of saying, you could, you, you, you can put it here, you can't put it there, you, blah, 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 we should just say if, you know, that the pets, pets can't be buried in the shoreline zone. They have to be cremated.
Even their guidelines just...
Just to make it a little more straightforward than saying someone can do it here.
That covers shoreline zone, but how do you cover other people's wells?
Drinking water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's true, it's true, cause the lake isn't even where you get your drinking water.
Which is what this whole other thing came about, which was not in shoreline zone, I don't believe.
No, it is in the shoreline.
It is in shoreline, okay.
Yeah, it's two issues though, like you were saying, yeah, absolutely. Well, I think what it was, a hundred feet, right, they're supposed to be...
Hundred feet from any major water body and, and water thing.
It doesn't say how far from like a well.
I think it did.
It does.
Hundred feet, I think.
Um, give me a second.
Five little wells, a hundred feet.
Case we had was within the hundred and...
But if they don't have a hundred feet?
And they got a cremation.
One says a hundred and fifty feet, one says a hundred feet.
Well, it probably depends too on the, the soils and the percolation rate, is it a hill, is it flat, what's the water doing, you know? There must be some variation to the...
Yeah, it's a big difference between a clay-based soil and our gravel soil.
Yeah.
You know, as far as...
What, what the chemicals do.
How it can travel and...
Yeah.
Or the size of the animal.
Right, do they go down or do they go with the surface floor or who, or groundwater floor or the size of the animal? Yeah, I know, some people have two hundred pound dogs and some people have hamsters and we're gonna be telling them, you know, so... That's where it gets too nitty gritty, the weight of the animals, that's like really, how can we? Yeah. Yeah, that's why I think, you know, maybe pushing them out of the more sensitive zones would be, across the board would be, I don't know. And then the hundred feet. How are we gonna do that? How would you ever figure that out? Well, we could put it in there and then if there was a case, at least...
You can just put it in under a hundred feet from all major water bodies and a hundred feet from all private or domestic wa, um, sources of...
Private or public.
Public water.
Yeah, it should be further from public, I think. That's what we have, it was like...
Can you just say drinking water?
Yeah, drinking water or...
Yeah.
Potable water or...
Everyone thinks the hundred feet makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so, so a first time system, I mean, they, they'll, they'll actually, you can get a variance all the way down to sixty feet in state for, for just leach field to your well. So, I mean...
It's not ideal though.
Yeah. I would say there's probably more bacteria in a leach field than it would be in one labradoodle.
Yeah, yeah, and chemicals too. Things you put, put, well, things that go down the drain. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could put the hundred feet in there, it's not like you have to be out there enforcing it, it's just if there is an issue, the, the person with the contaminated well has the backing to, you know, to report it themselves, I guess, and then we can ask them to...
If it's in there, then I have to, then I, somebody has to be able to enforce it, so if they say, hey, they, they buried this there, so then I have to put in, out an NOV, which, not at the end of the world, um, and get them to dig it up and, and move it.
How many, if it happens? What? If it happens, how long do you give them to get the labradoodle out of there, and then after the fact, what are we gonna find?
Yeah.
What's the fine? You're gonna have ramifications for it.
Well, we don't, you guys don't set fines, that comes from my office.
Yeah, no, I think if they dig it up, then they...
You always, you always strive for compliance, you don't want, I don't, last thing I wanna do is slap people with fines, you try to get them to get on the same page and, and at least...
Yeah, but if they don't?
But if they don't dig it, if they don't dig it up and there's an issue, then eventually the town could find them.
And then they have to pay for all the legal fees and all that stuff.
I think, everything in the ordinance is, is, you could, enforceable through fining, isn't it, pretty much? It's just the code officer has to choose to enact it.
Right.
Right.
So getting something in there, then it would, there would be a fining mechanism if it was necessary.
So, how do you wanna write this, then, disposal of animal carcasses or water quality protection?
Do you need to spell it, domestic animal, or, I mean, is it farm?
Are we talking about, yeah, we're talking about somebody?
Deer.
Yeah, exactly, they, their deer carcass, I mean, is that what we're talking about, too, or? No, we're talking, uh, yeah.
Well, any animal.
I think domesticated should, would cover it, because that, that covers all the, if it was euthanized, blah, 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 you're probably gonna catch almost all the cases with domesticated. But that, that doesn't necessarily cover someone grabs roadkill and buries it next to the neighbor's well, and there's a E. coli problem, but...
Be a pretty bad neighbor if you do that.
What happens if you have a pet giraffe? Does that turn domesticated?
I think it is become domesticated by default, I would say, like, certain, you know, like... Yeah, sure, it's a bison, but it's like, if it's right there on the farm, it's domesticated, right?
Domesticated agricultural carcasses or...
So if somebody goes and buries a horse?
Well, that's why I was saying agricultural or something like that as well, and then...
Yeah, I mean, I think domesticated would cover a horse.
That sounds a lot larger than a labradoodle.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, there's... I know, I know, well, I think there are separate standards for agric, agricultural... Well, that law in Title twenty-two is, that section is titled depositing of dead animal where nuisance. Just say dead animals.
Dead animals.
Right, we don't need to be specific. That covers us, then we don't, then we're not dickering with somebody over whether it's domesticated or agricultural or anything, well, is it a... A dead animal?
It actually says a dead horse, cow, sheep, hog, or of any domestic animal so far.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should definitely put this in there, just because the resident asked us to, and if it does, gets voted down, it gets voted down, or however it is, but... I feel that where somebody is actually, you guys do your job for the residents in a sense.
Well, yeah, and the, and the, 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 the well test did reflect problems, too, it wasn't just a...
Right.
Yeah, that, you know. So, yeah, any dead animals, and I wouldn't worry about the size, really.
Yeah.
Because it's like, if it's so small, no one's gonna complain, and then if it's big, they'll, it's still covered, it's covered.
With a hundred, within a hundred feet of a water body or a well? You wanna go further from a well?
I don't know, I don't know, I'm just...
No, no.
I think we should stick with what the state says, just for consistency. I was just wondering if we wanted to maybe put, you know, push that kind of stuff right out of the shoreline zone. But that's a, I don't know, we could do a hundred feet instead, so... But we have to make sure we, we're clear on which bodies we're talking, water bodies we're talking about, we're just talking about the great ponds, or we're talking about, like, the resource protection. Town, too, and the river, you know?
I think we're getting rid of domestic.
Yeah, I'm just putting something down right now.
Yeah, just get rid of domestic there. Oh, you wanna go that?
Same animal?
I would keep it simple. Yeah, 'cause then it covers that, covers any sort of...
Right.
They change willing to within.
Um, I just worry about somebody says, well, what happens? If somebody hits a squirrel, any animal, you know?
Well, don't bury it within a hundred feet of the water.
Don't pick him up off the road and bury him.
There, I would say the same thing, too.
Leave him on the surface, yeah.
Just let him get hit a couple more times, the crows will get him.
Or a raven.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I would say I don't really want people...
Oh, are you kidding me?
Chucking next to the lake anyway, so...
Make squirrel pie.
True. Whatever. You know? Yeah. It'll be funny, it's like, you'll see the thing dragged back out in the road, and like, if that thing was just on the side, now it's in the middle of the road, what happened?
Do you think we need to be more specific?
I would say a hundred feet of a, a water body as, as defined by, like, in, in the ordinance, so it's, you know...
Great ponds? Rivers and streams?
In the resource protection district, too. Well, I mean, this'll apply to them all, but, um...
So there's a hundred feet from natural water body and like seventy-five feet from the river, I'm just, make it easy, not have a bunch of different measurements, just say a hundred feet.
Right, but I'm just saying, are you talking about great ponds, are you talking about swamps? Right, well, I mean, there's the ones that are defined as resource protection in the ordinance that, that we could specify. Maybe after a hundred feet of a natural water body within the shoreline resource protection districts or something like that. So that it has to be a natural water body within the shoreline or resource protection districts. Potentially, I mean...
But what if you get somebody that has a pond?
Well, I mean, the town doesn't really protect wetlands under two acres, it's pretty much excluded from the ordinance, but, I mean, I'm not against that. But I'd just like to define water bodies so that we don't have to do it later when we're, when it comes up.
But I'm gonna still leave the, I'm gonna separate that, because he still, doesn't matter, a hundred feet away from a potable water, water source.
Any district.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't, so I, I just put a, a hundred feet of natural water body within the resource protection or shoreline district, comma, or within a hundred feet of a source of potable water.
I don't think you need to add it, it's just...
Yeah.
Need the what?
No, I think that's pretty good.
I think that's fine, it's just it's known that you have it wherever you have a well in whatever district, huh?
No, it's, we could also, don't know if anybody interested in the aquifer protection district, if we're, feel like that's, should be implicated in this, or...
So shoreline resource protection and hopeful.
Well, it'd be hard, 'cause, oh, I get, yeah. The hard thing with the aquifer protection district is you can't be a hundred feet away from it, 'cause the water body, you're on top of the water body. So how do we need, we end up with a little bit different verbiage.
Alright, so if that one's good, then...
A lot of times we just kinda overlook it, because it's difficult to figure it in that way, and it does overlay all the other districts, it's like a kind of a... It's just brown.
Now, the next one.
We got, we got that covered, right?
Well, I was just wondering if anybody thought we should put anything about the aquifer protection district in the, in the, in this verbiage.
Wouldn't that be covered under potable water?
Well, and that's kinda what we were saying, it's the aquifer protection district, it's impossible to be a hundred feet away from it, 'cause you're on top of it. So I, we would need a little bit different verbiage to address that. But I do, do know that the, you know, the aquifer in the northern part of the town has been cited in the comprehensive plan as being like a source of drinking water in the future, and that we should try to protect it, because it, that might be what the town uses for drinking water in the future, but... I don't know if we're, if we're stretching the limits to, to ask people to not, not bury over the aquifer protection district, might be pushing the limits of what we can really do.
I don't know, I'm really more concerned...
Pretty big, if...
I'm obviously concerned about the lakes and stuff like that, but I'm more concerned with the, the well, with this one than anything, just because...
Yeah.
It's really where this whole thing sprung from, it wasn't that somebody...
Yeah.
Buried something too close to the lake or...
It's true, there, there is a lot more contamination in the surface water than the groundwater, and we wanna... I don't, but people, people's wells come right out of the aquifer, so I don't know. Or maybe we should make it, we could make it further, further from the wells within the aquifer protection district, it has to be a little bit further away.
Well, you're talking about leaching downward, your well would be that, I don't know, I just don't know. It's up to you guys, what we wanna take.
It's difficult the way the groundwater moves. I don't know, I'm just putting it out there, we don't need to figure it out tonight, just food for thought, even, if, if we want, you know, I wouldn't mind playing something in there, but I, I don't know. I don't wanna push it with this thing.
You know, what's the option? You can't, and that's quite a bit of...
Right, that's kinda hard, hard sell.
Yeah.
Doesn't really make sense.
I think that's probably...
Well, that's good for now, and we'll see if anybody, if any, you know, light bulbs, light bulbs come on for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, those.
What's next?
About it.
The only other one was that timber harvesting, but...
Yeah.
I'm still struggling, I'm, mind me personally, I'm, I don't think we need to add it in there, because I still get notification, if you wanna know, you can just call the office.
Yeah.
But...
Alright, well, honestly, I brought it forward just 'cause I didn't, didn't think we had much to, to deal with for town meeting, I wanted to get some discussion going and everything, so... I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I'm not like sold on it, and, you know, if we, if we have these other things to focus on, then...
Well, the only reason I say, I mean, 'cause you're asking the applicant to call me and, and do it, but the state, when they go in for a forestry permit, the state sends me the confirmation.
I know, it's just that, by the time the town gets the confirmation from the state, it's often the, the timber harvesting has been completed already. Just the time, the timeframe has never played in properly. I mean, I would like to see better, um, landowner notification, like, when, you know, when your neighbor decides to, you know...
Yeah.
Hire people to come in, that, you know, they should be calling all their butters. But is that something we put in the ordinance? I don't know.
That's more of us a good neighbor, hey, I'm gonna be logging, and it's gonna be late, early, late nights, you know?
That's why I was thinking we could put in that they notify the town, and then you could supply them with a list of a butters information, or something, which would kinda suck for you, but, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how...
Then, then you gotta look at, at the end of the day, is, is it their business what you're doing with your property, too?
Well, it does, because if, my neighbor is logging out seventy acres right now, and it does affect my property, I go in there, I mean, like the storm, I got blowdowns now, because there's no trees next to my property, you know, things like that, does directly affect, and the trucks are coming right in, you don't, you know, onto the public roads. Um, it does affect the, the neighbors. But is it something the code officer should be addressing? I don't know.
Because I, if, even, say he was on, if, say this individual that's doing seventy acres, which is use you, 'cause you used yourself, um, did cut on your property, that's still something I wouldn't touch. It's a, it's a trespassing situation, and you can, yeah.
But if I got a proper notification, if I could've, 'cause save my, my neighbor didn't tell me, he didn't tell you...
Right.
So I wasn't able to go in there, mark my property line. You, you, I mean, it's...
It's, it's, it's really on the forester to know where he's cutting.
It's the forester's responsibility to mark it.
But there's, the forester isn't required, there's, there's no forester.
Well, the, the people harvesting it, well, and then a forester will come down.
They're not foresters.
So a state forest will, sometimes will come down, so when...
Sometimes.
When, when, let's, another person in town cut, um, a large area, uh, somebody called the state, and, and the forester did come down, just to verify what he was cutting and the amount that he was cutting.
Yeah, well, that's 'cause they were in the shoreline zone or close to the shoreline zone.
True, that, too.
This is just...
Well, there's another incident, I saw one on Byro.
I, I wanted to get in the ordinance, when we were discussing this years ago, I wanted to get in that it required a forester for every commercial harvest, but then that didn't end up making sense. So we didn't do it. Well, because it, it's just a financial burden for the landowner, who might be educated enough to not need a forester. It's really agreement between the logger and the landowner, and that the forester is there to help it, but it's, you, it's hard to comp, compel people to, to necessitate that they use one. Even though, I mean, I think if they're in the shoreline zone, then I think they're required to have a forester by the state, but if they're just in wherever, you know, they're not. I don't know, I don't have any verbiage for that, so I'm not, I don't feel like we, I mean, we have to push forward with that necessarily. I am interested in what Lee Jay was saying about some of the, you know, looking at some of the shoreline zoning changes.
Mm-hmm. So I talked to John, 'cause I was on East Shore Drive the other day. I did, um, talked to an individual, um, from Archipalego, um, it's a consultant firm out of Portland. He, this individual's name's Mike Morse. He was the DEP coordinator for twenty-plus years and he's agreed to come down and do a workshop with the planning board in September, in, in February.
Yeah.
Someday. I'm still, we're still trying to put a date together. Uh, it was more or less like, you know, like what should we be, when, when we're reviewing greatest practical extent, what should we be really looking at, you know? Should we be looking at everything from the retaining walls to the vegetation? Obviously requiring, one of, another thing is, is one of the, I'd like to start requiring something from York County, uh, Soil and Conservation District, you know, a final vegetation plan.
Mm-hmm.
You know, on something like this because I've got some-
Seems to do that.
You know, and so, I mean, it makes, it'll make my job easier and, and the applicant's saying, okay, well, I, to get occupancy or to get final check off, sign off on this, you gotta follow this plan.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, that is something we should be asking for.
Yeah. Um, but no, yeah, I wanted, you know, I know, you know, Pat had a lot of questions, her, her questions more pertain towards septic systems in, in the shoreline zone, but, um, that's that's nothing that we really can control per se, you know, you're either failing or you're not, you know?
Right, it's not a planning-
Right, it's nothing that you guys deal with, it's, it's my office and, um, but we can, um, always look at, you know, in the future, you know, adopting more towards that chapter one thousand and, and because how they do theirs is a tier, so at like, there's no new construction within fifteen feet of the water at all. So, I think it's fifteen feet. And then at, at twenty-five feet, the height of your structure is like fifteen, and at fifty feet, you can go up to, so some of these houses end up being like a staggered look. You'll have like a porch, it's only at fifteen feet, and then they go up to another twenty, and then at, I think your, your maximum height is twenty-five feet, at seventy-five feet. Within the shoreline zone, yeah. And that's something, he's gonna put together, when he does come down, he'll have a, it's gonna be a slide, he'll go through the whole PowerPoint and, you know, and it'll be just a good, I think it'll be good.
It doesn't jive with our schedule for making changes, though.
No, I'm not gonna make, if, if we're behind, I'm, I'll just push it out till March. I mean, this is just something that I wanna get more familiar with the board as well as myself and, uh, open up a door of communication.
If he had, what he talks about, you know, creates some ideas for changes in the shoreline zone.
Yeah.
February's a little bit late.
Oh, I was, Wesley wasn't doing it for any zoning amendments for this year. It was more or less, let's, you know, hear this out and then, you know, if we start, we do start making changes for the next year, which way, which way do we wanna go, but.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I think it's good for the board to have more knowledge about, you know, 'cause a lot of the work that you guys do is around water.
Yeah.
Water quality and things like that.
Most of the buildings are-
I mean, look what's going on right now with our rainstorms, you know, we're, you know, we could be requiring more storm order, you know, management and practices and things like that. So that's all I have for you guys on that. I'm just waiting to, for a schedule of when he, I had told him the end of February.
Mm-hmm.
Would be, you know, nothing sooner than then because we were dealing with this.
Mm-hmm.
So that was it? Those changes?
As far as, that's what Dave had written down.
Wanna add like soil testing to the solar?
The soil testing to the solar? Well, I liked what, um, Andrew was saying about putting it in there generally, not necessarily specifically for solar. But, um, I mean, I, I mean, if you look in site plan review, we are, we have the purview to require that right in site plan review. The other night, the, it was kinda unfortunate the consultant opened his mouth because what he said wasn't factual, but nonetheless, um, I, I don't think it's necessary to put it in because I think we, we already have the purview to do it. Personally, but.
Where was that?
Um, but I, I'm not gonna try.
There is verbiage of requiring whatever technical reports may be necessary.
There's a couple places. And there was, I mean, I'm, the one I found right out, which I was, I was gonna go and look and try to rebut the consultant. I was like, that's just a waste of time, let's just, 'cause it's not gonna change anyone's mind, let's just progress with the thing. But, um, on page one hundred and nine, hazardous special in radioactive materials, and it says, "The planning board reserves the right to introduce more stringent standards based on independent scientific studies or other credible evidence." So, I mean, we, you know, if we'd chosen to do that, we, we have the full backing of the ordinance to do it, as far as I can tell, so.
Yeah. In, in that particular case, we'd have to come up with some scientific reason because that side had scientific reason saying it wasn't hazardous.
Well, lead is hazardous.
Right, but not at the amount that would seep out of those panels. I mean, they had reports that said that.
Yeah, but you think about it, any hazardous material's gonna be contained in something. We don't just carry these things around on plates and hand them to each other.
Right, but we're John saying you have-
Hazardous materials are always contained in something.
What you just read said we can do that if we had some scientific reason. We did not.
And if they say that they only, it might have trace amounts and that, like John's saying, it doesn't give you enough.
Well, it's, we weren't talking about trace amounts, I mean-
We got, you know, you have more susceptibility of lead poisoning from a car battery.
Oh, absolutely. No, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I think that compares-
All of those panels.
Comparing one source of lead to another doesn't really get us anywhere in the conversation. It's kind of, it's, we're just dealing with the one source and how we can mediate it, mitigate it and deal with it. You know, just 'cause there's another source sitting next to it, that, we're just not dealing with that.
I'm not saying to wrong, make it right.
No, 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 but I'm, but, I don't, I, I just don't like them telling you, oh, there's more lead in shotgun shells than these things. And it's, that might be true, but that's not really what we're talking about. We're talking about what's in the panels and what can we do to, to make these solar fields safe and, and, and a viable thing in the future and, and and just, you know, see if they, they do bleach things out. I wanted, you know, there's, there's constituents in those things that on, you know, silicon-based compounds that are really untested for, we don't know what the long-term effects of those things are or what, I don't know. I think that it, it's, it's worth, it's worth investigating these things 'cause they're they're around.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't, I don't feel prone to, to trying to add something to the ordinance specific to that right now. I feel like we do have purview to, to ask for things like that in the future, if, if the board feel, deems it necessary, and I feel like the board didn't really feel like it was necessary, so we didn't do it.
Well, I, you know, I was swayed by the scientific data they gave us.
Yeah.
Just didn't seem fair to me to send them back while we spent time looking for conflicting scientific evidence.
Yeah, yeah. Well, to me, lead is lead, so I just, that's kind of my viewpoint on it, you know, and it's, so.
Uh, you're right, lead is lead, but then, you know, they had reports that said that, that lead isn't gonna hurt you.
Yeah, no, and I, I was, I was gonna tell them they shouldn't do it.
Yes, please.
You already did.
No, we didn't. No, we're waiting. We wait for the camera to vote on the last meeting's minutes.
Oh, we can't, yeah. December seventh?
Yes.
Right, that's, that's kinda where that, which is exactly what we were just talking about. And I thought, I thought the verbiage that we have in there, uh, accurately represented what happened. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from December seventh as written.
I'll second that.
Move that we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.